This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Lemonster, locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
This is a public hearing. The Lemonster City Council, 25-20, National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Nashua Street, request to install four jointly owned poles on Nashua Street beginning at a point approximately 15 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Main Street and Nashua Street and continuing approximately 311 feet in the southeast direction. Is there anyone here that is to represent? Just for the record, state your name and the clerk.
Of course. Mark Tapley, National Grid. So I'm here to represent for us tonight. We would like to relocate two poles from the, what looks like the east side of the road to the west side of the road, add another pole in that line, and replace one other pole that's on the west side of the road already. And this is, from my understanding, for a project where we're trying to alleviate the overhead lines near the train tracks.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mark? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on, any councillor on the public hearing, Public Service Committee? Have any questions or comments? Councillor Cormier?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Mr. Tapley for coming. In the short time that I've been on the council, the National Grid has been really good about sending somebody in, giving us a map, giving us documentation, explaining to us why exactly they're moving the poles. They've made great efforts and been very helpful. So that's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to thank them and Mr. Tapley personally for coming down. It's been very helpful. It's moved things along. It's been so much easier when we've gotten calls from constituents to say, hey, this is why they're doing it, this is where it's going, being able to point it out to them. So that's just my way of saying thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Any other councillors have any questions or comments? Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? The third time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? The second time, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition? The third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? If not, I'll declare the public portion closed. Are there any other councillors that have any questions or comments? If not, I'll declare the public forum closed.
Thank you, Councillor Freehan.
The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. My understanding is no one has signed up. Is there any member of the public which, that would like to participate in the public forum? A second time, is there any member of the public that would like to participate in the public forum? In a third and final time, is there any member of the public that would like to participate in the public forum? Seeing none, I will declare the public forum closed. To order, would you please all join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now take the role of the city council, starting with Councillor Freehan. Councillor Dobrowski?
Present.
Councillor Shalafou Zephyr?
Present.
Councillor Feckley?
Present.
Councillor Angelini?
Present.
Councillor, um, how did you?
Present.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Councillor David Cormier?
Present.
All nine members of the council are present. Is the chairman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the organizational meeting of January 6, 2020, and the minutes of the city council meeting of January 13. On the minutes of January 6, they seem to be in order except for under appointment of legal counsel. It indicates that it was seconded by Councillor Shalafou Zephyr, but Councillor Shalafou Zephyr was not, was absent.
Also, is the, was it that, what date was that meeting?
Six.
Six, okay.
Yes.
The agenda's got a typo on it.
Yeah. So I don't recall who did second that, but...
All right.
That's an error.
The clerk will review the tape and amend it.
But I do find that the minutes of January 13, 2020 are in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Very good. We'll move on now to appointments, and I would suggest to the chair of Ways and Means that maybe we could take these in block?
I will. Appointments. Oh, no. I'm taking over the city clerk.
Sorry.
Appointments. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Ann Bea Mahan to register our voters, term to expire April 15, 2023. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Nancy Pam Marini to register our voters, term to expire April 15, 2023. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Charles Milhahn to register our voters, term to expire April 15, 2023.
These appointments are all referred to the chair of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, we will take them in block, regular course.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to orders, starting with C-47.
C-47. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $60,000 be made to the Elections and Registration Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C-47 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to C-48.
C-48. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $2,000 be made to the Police Department Overtime Account, same amount to be transferred from the Disability Fines Receipts Reserved for Appropriation Account.
C-48 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
Same, same as the other one, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you. I will now move on to C-49.
C-49. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $150,000 be made to the ITTF Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C-49 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Councillor Cormier. We'll now move on to petitions.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Go back to C-48. I'm not sure that that requires a two-thirds vote.
It's a majority.
Okay. All right. We can amend that so that at the time we'll, we'll make a note.
If I may too, Mr. President, to just to make a note on that, I'm gonna, when it comes time, I'm gonna have the clerk of Finance take care of that, because I can't, I, I was, I'm on the Disability Commission. So I can't wear both hats and advocate for it over on the Disability Commission and then vote for it here.
All right.
It's a conflict of interest.
So noted.
Thank you.
We'll address that when it comes up for action. And thank you, Councillor Freehan, for noting the vote requirement on that. Petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 32-20.
32-20. Election Order. An order by the city of Lemonster, relative to the presidential primary, March 3, 2020.
32-20 is referred to the chair of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you very much. 33-20.
33-20. Diane P. Amadon, renew the second-hand dealer's license for upscale consignment located at 875 Merriam Ave, Suite 131.
33-20 is referred to the chair of Ways and Means.
This is also regular course, Mr. President, and we don't need any referrals because they are already in place, thanks to the city clerk.
Great. Thank you very much. Next, 34-20.
34-20. Susan Shalafou Zephyr, renew the second-hand dealer's license for Jenny's Helping Hand, Inc., located at 52 Mechanic Street.
34-20 is referred to the chair of Ways and Means.
Also regular course, and no other referrals are necessary.
Thank you, Councillor Feckley. 35-20.
35-20. Gregory C. Chapdeline, purchasing agent, request to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for information technology managed, managed services for the city for a six-year period.
35-20 is referred to the chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you. We'll now move on to 36-20.
36-20. Claire M. Freehan, councillor-at-large, request to amend Sections 21-13B and 21-13 of the Lemonster City Ordinance by deleting "Cost of all repairs made to or connections between private property and main sewers shall be paid for by the owner of the property" and replace with "Cost of all repairs made to or connections between private property and main sewers shall be the responsibility of the city with no cost to the homeowner."
36-20 is referred to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course, with a referral to the DPW, and I would ask, Mr. President, if you would request of the petition or if there's any other referrals that she feels is necessary.
Very well, Councillor Freehan. Are there any other referrals you'd like?
I think it should be referred to Public Service as well, because it's sewer and water. And also, we may need to amend this because the, its connections on the third, between private property and main sewers, its connections not connect with.
We, we can take that up when it...
And there's also another line that was on the petition at the end, that the language also applies to water mains, is described in 21-13B of the ordinances, of its water and sewer.
Would you like to take up that amendment now?
As long as we amend it.
Okay.
It's important to have the ball.
All right. I'm not gonna refer, I'm gonna leave it with Legal Affairs. Are there any other referrals you want?
No, why would you not do it to?
That's my ruling. I'm gonna leave it with Legal Affairs. That's been assigned.
I'm asking for a point of order, though. Why?
I ruled on your point of order. I'm not gonna refer it to Public Service, I'm referring it to Legal Affairs. And could you also add, I would like to know how many, when you, when we refer this to DPW specifically, I wanna know how many people are participating in the insurance program? Is there any other questions anybody else has on this? Yes, Councillor Shalafou Zephyr?
Thank you. I would suggest also that we refer to the mayor and the comptroller.
Very well. 36-20 is given further time, or regular course, I'm sorry, with referrals to the DPW, mayor, comptroller, and that's it. All right. Matters before the council. City of Lemonster Financial Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We began, at least, on July 1, 2019, the stabilization fund had $19,890,850.25 in it. We've earned $85,909.42 to date, including three appropriations that are on the calendar. For tonight, we've spent $3,773,836.12, leaving us a balance of, pending the successful passage of those three, it will leave us a balance of $16,202,923.55, and that is the financial report.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions on the financial report? Seeing done, we'll move on to C-45. Does the chairman of Finance have a, a report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-45 is Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $70,000 be made to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. This is regarding a craftsman salary of $56,528, as well as Gallagher overtime, $13,472, for a total of $70,000. We received this on January 9, 2020, from the mayor's office. Basically, you know, what this is, is, as everybody knows, we rent the space out to the courthouse, but part of the contract and agreement is that we maintain the property. So we do have a craftsman that works there. This is standard. We do this every year, and the craftsman does regular maintenance and, and sometimes does run into overtime there as well. I'm assuming there's work to be done outside of hours on occasion. So it would be my opinion to grant C-45, and I would, I would ask members of my committee, Councillor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. Councillor Angelini?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay. We have a unanimous agreement, Mr. President, to grant C-45. You have heard the unanimous recommendation of the chair of Finance to grant C-45. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Opposed, passes nine to nothing. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Do you have any orders? Order that the sum of $70,000 be appropriated to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, same to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund, regarding craftsman salary, $56,528, Gallagher overtime, $13,472, for a total of $70,000. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. This is a yea or nay vote. All those in favor, please state, say by, please state by saying yea.
Yea.
All those opposed? Yeah, passes nine to nothing. We'll move on to C-46.
Okay. C-46. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of $36,375 be made to the Police Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. We received a breakdown here, this is dated from the mayor's office on January 9. There's $28,500 for new recruit expenses, as well as $7,875 for MDT license for, for IMC, which is $36,375 total. I did have a, a chance to, to speak to interim chief Goldman today. He's very excited about the new recruits. He said, from him down, there will be a total of 76 people on the force, which is the most since the mid-'90s, he said, and this'll bring our patrolmen back up to 62, which he said he's been striving for, for a while. He did send us communication to the, to the mayor back on January 3, and requesting an appropriation of $7,875 from stabilization to be transferred to the police expense account. This money is for five new MDT, which is a, a mobile data terminal, which is the computers inside the cruisers, their licenses from IMC. We currently have 10 licenses, and with the added traffic, cars and other patrols, not all cruisers can log on to the, to their MDTs. Increasing the number of licenses is critical to safe and efficient operations. This was not budgeted for, as this issue was unanticipated. So what will happen is, instead of having 10 licenses, we're gonna have 15. It's gonna be a lot more efficient. He said they've been having problems operating. People were getting bumped out of the system and stuff like that. I did have that conversation with him today. And then obviously, we got a breakdown for the new recruits' equipment as follows. Tuition, $9,000. Radios, $4,500. Firearms with related equipment, $1,527. Bullet-resistant vests, $3,075. Tasers with related equipment, $9,449. And other things like cuffs and batons, et cetera, $783.10. So that is the breakdown of this total appropriation of $36,375, and it would be my opinion that we grant C-46, and I'll check with the clerk of Finance.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. And the third member, Councillor Angelini?
Okay. All right. So we have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, to grant C-46.
Thank you, Councillor Cormier. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Finance to grant C-46. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-46, indicate in the usual manner. Communication passes nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $36,375 be appropriated to the Police Department Expense Account, same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You have heard the request for the adoption of your order. This is a yea or nay vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, that passes by a vote of nine to zero. Move on to 30-20.
30-20. Gregory C. Chapdeline, purchasing agent, and Paula Deacon, superintendent of schools, request to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for internet connectivity services for a five-year period on behalf of the school department. I did have a conversation with Greg Chapdeline late last week regarding this. There is a, an explanation here. I will read it into the record. This is regarding the petition to allow a five-year contract for internet services for the school department. Dear Honorable Members of the Lemonster City Council, this is dated January 9, 2020. This petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for internet connectivity services for a five-year period on behalf of the school department. This will be a new services contract that the city will be bidding out in 2020. This service or contract is paid for by the federal E-rate program, which some of you may be familiar with. Per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass a majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. The school department regularly contracts for internet connectivity services from private vendors. Historically, these contracts have been shorter periods of time, many typically only one-year agreements. As the requirements for the federal E-rate program become more complex and the cost for internet services continually rising, the school department may benefit both operational and financially from entering into a longer-term contract. Hence, we are asking permission to structure a bid around a five-year deal. The bid for this service will most likely go out in late winter, so we need to begin preparations for that now. The actual contract will result from this bid will run concurrent with the city's fiscal year. This action must be voted upon now as the purchasing agent... This action must be voted upon now as the purchasing agent prepares to issue the new bid, since it must be known what time period or contract length we'll be able to structure the bid around. We would respectfully advise the city council vote in favor of allowing the internet connectivity services contract to cover a five-year period. So, as Greg explained to me, this is, they don't really call it a grant, but it sort of is like a grant. We will get reimbursed for this, and, you know, to have more competitive bidding, even though the federal government does pay for it, it certainly helps our cause to go to them with a better price. It ensures that we will be successful in making sure that everything is covered with a competitive bid. And I'm sure, as most people know, I did ask Greg to kind of refresh my memory. We certainly have a few of these agreements where we've went out for a length of, a longer length of time for busing, trash, ambulance billing, payroll, and things like that. So, it does, it certainly does save us money in the long run, and I certainly am in favor of granting this, and I'll check with members of my committee.
I agree.
Councilor Angelini? Okay, so we have a unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, to grant thirty dash twenty.
Thank you, Councilor. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of finance to grant thirty dash twenty. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, thirty dash twenty passes by a vote of nine to zero, and I don't think we require for an order on this one, so. We'll move on to legal affairs, starting with C dash forty-four. Does the chairman have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Communication forty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that the Leominster City Council vote to adopt an order to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to enter into lease agreements for eleven certain properties described as attached. Essentially, in order to continue on with the rail trail construction project that this council approved previously, we need to comply with the federal funding requirements. There is a letter from the chief assessor that I think adequately summarizes this request, so I'm going to read that into the record. This is a letter dated January 17, 2020, addressed to the Leominster City Council. Dear members of the city council, please accept this letter in response to your request for additional information from me as your chief assessor for the city of Leominster. Subject. Communication forty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that the Leominster City Council vote to adopt an order to authorize the mayor, on behalf of the city, to enter into lease agreements for eleven certain properties described as attached. This communication was given regular course with a referral to the chief assessor, health director, and treasurer. Communication, it is my understanding that there are eleven properties that have encroachments onto the city-owned right-of-way to be used for the Twin Cities rail trail. At forty-five North Main Street, we have four square feet, and the rent would be thirty dollars a year. At fifty-nine North Main Street, we have thirty-one square feet. The rent would be two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars a year. Seventy-five to eighty-seven North Main Street, we have fifty-four square feet. The rent would be four-hundred-and-five dollars a year. A hundred and nineteen North Main Street, we have four square feet. The rent would be thirty dollars a year. One thirty-five North Main Street, eight square feet. The rent would be sixty dollars per year. One forty-one North Main Street, two square feet. The rent is fifteen dollars a year. Five twenty-five North Main Street, thirty-five square feet. The rent is two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars a year. Five eighty-three North Main Street, one-hundred-and-three square feet, with a rent of seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per year. Six seventeen North Main Street, two-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet. The rent is one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars a year. Six twenty-three North Main Street, forty-two square feet. The rent is three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars a year. Eight fifty-three North Main Street, one-twenty-seven square feet. The rent is nine-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars per year. These encroachments are not practical to remove and may consist of building improvements or other permanent structures. If the encroachment cannot be removed and has been approved to stay with a lease agreement, as the properties above have been, then a lease agreement needs to be signed in order for the city to continue forward with the federal funding for the project. The bids for the Twin Cities rail trail project are scheduled to be opened on February 11, 2020. If the leases are not signed, this can prohibit the opening of the bids, therefore delaying the project. The valuation of these leases was appraised by Howard Dono and Associates and approved appraiser by Mass DOT and Federal Highway. It is also my understanding, according to federal guidelines, that these funds must be deposited into an approved Title XXIII account, only to be used for trail maintenance. I am comfortable with the process for establishing these leases, and my recommendation would be for the approval of Communication forty-four. Please feel free to contact me directly if you have any additional questions. As part of the mayor's package to us, he did indicate further that the properties to be leased are not useful for their present purpose whatsoever. I did get a chance to go through the leases. There is also a two percent rent escalator each year on the leases. You know, the long and short of it is, they're of no use to the city. The encroachments can't practically be removed, and they are encroaching on the property that's necessary for this rail trail construction project. So, the leases need to be signed in order for the project to go forward. My recommendation would be to approve Communication forty-four. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I check with Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr.
Thank you very much. I will be abstaining from this vote this evening, as some I have in the past, on the rail trail votes, as a family member owns property in Phase Two of that project.
Very well. Your abstention will be noted for the record. Councilor Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with the chairman to grant C dash forty-four.
The only other thing I'd mention, Mr. President, is we do require a two-thirds vote.
Very good. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant C dash forty-four. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Should we do a voice vote?
We can do a voice vote. We'll, okay, so we'll do a voice vote, starting with Councilor Freedom.
Yea.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Yea.
Councilor Feckley.
Yea.
Councilor Angelini.
Yea.
Councilor Aroninger.
Yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor David Cormier.
Yea.
And the president will be recorded as yea. So, by a vote of eight to zero, C forty-four is granted. We'll move on to twenty-six dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-six dash twenty, Jeffrey D. Nickel, intend registered voters to accept Dobson Circle as a street in the city of Leominster. We have pending referrals from the DPW, the engineer, the planning director, the planning board, and the building inspector. We've not received any of those referrals. I would ask for further time, and I would ask the city clerk to remind these departments to get us these referrals. I'd further note that the fact that this matter was being given further time was communicated to some of the neighbors who indicated that they would contact the other neighbors. My recommendation is further time for twenty-six twenty. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr?
Yes, I agree with that.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give twenty-six to twenty further time. Is there any further discussion?
If I may.
Councilor David Cormier?
Thank you. Just so that I can make sure it goes on record, I'm going to not be redundant. I'm going to say this for this one and the next one. When we get a response from planning, can we make sure that it involves detail like, you know, how much the original bond was, how much has been released, you know, what the last contact was, you know, with regard to, you know, the responsible parties, you know, subdivision regulations state that there's a timeframe. I think it's two years after completion. Has that passed? You know, when was that? Just so we don't have a lot of going back and forth, and we can get all this information upfront. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Any further discussion? Councilor Dombrowski?
Yeah, just actually along those same lines as Councilor Cormier. If the property involved a covenant, just when the date the covenant was released, and if it was released lot by lot, or it was a blanket release.
Very well. Anybody else? Any other council has a question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting or giving twenty-six dash twenty further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Anybody opposed? Nine to zero. Twenty-six twenty is given further time. We'll move on to twenty-seven dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-seven dash twenty, Beth Spinelli, intend registered voters to accept Massapoag Road as a street in the city of Leominster. This is similar to the preceding petition, Mr. President. We have pending referrals that are outstanding from the Department of Public Works, the city engineer, the planning director, the planning board, and the building inspector. My recommendation is further time, and also, I think, that both Councilor Cormier's comments and mine also stand for this petition.
Very well. I'll check with Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr.
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also am in agreement. Thank you.
And we're going to ask for the same quality of information that Councilor Cormier pointed out.
That is correct.
All right. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate of granting twenty-seven dash twenty?
Not granting further time.
I'm sorry, giving twenty-seven dash twenty further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Anyone opposed? That passes nine, further time by nine to zero. Twenty-eight dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-eight dash twenty, Officer Julio Ramos, install stop signs and no parking signs on Research Drive. We received a referral from the traffic agent for the Leominster City Department that was in agreement with this. My recommendation would be to grant petition twenty-eight dash twenty, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Councilor Dombrowski, is this going to require an amendment?
Oh, you know, I think it does, actually, now that you bring that up.
I think the word parking signs needs to be substituted for stop signs.
Yeah, I apologize. Let me...
Oh. Okay, that's what I meant, substituting the word parking for stop.
Actually, so the amendment would be to delete stop signs, install no parking signs, is that?
I guess, I think all you need to do is delete the word stop and substitute the word parking. Yes, Councilor?
You know, there are two stop signs. So, as a matter of a technicality, would you have to include parking and stop signs in the?
The petition includes both.
The petition includes both, because at the bottom of the last paragraph, it does say that, but not at the beginning. Is that being overly technical?
So, we should make it clear.
Well, let me just read the correspondence from Lieutenant Kennedy. The Leominster Police Department Traffic Bureau, with the support of Chief Michael Goldman, sent the following petition to the Leominster City Council. We support the need for the following petition to approve placement of no parking signs on Research Drive. I noticed in your email, highlighted in yellow below, install stop signs. If entered in error, please delete it from the petition. So, I think, I think what we need to do is amend this to delete stop signs in, so that it would read, install no parking signs on Research Drive, I think. So, I would make that motion to amend.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr seconded, all those in favor of amending twenty-eight dash twenty, please signify in the usual manner. So, petition twenty-eight dash twenty is amended to read no parking signs as opposed to stop signs. Does the chairman have a recommendation?
I do, and just to make sure the record is clear, petition twenty-eight dash twenty, install no parking signs on Research Drive, my recommendation is to grant the petition as amended.
I'll check with your clerk, Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr.
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
We have a unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant petition twenty-eight dash twenty. Is there any further discussion? It's Councilor Cormier.
If I may, I just, you know, there was a diagram given here of the street, so I'm assuming when this is put in ordinance form, there appears to be measurements. I just want to make sure that we're not going to adversely affect anybody with no parking over there. Any of the, I don't know what, I don't know what the future holds further up the road past the registry, so we just want to make sure that, well, I guess when the second reading comes, we can, or the first reading, when it's put in ordinance form, we can double-check it at that time, to make sure that the lengths are appropriate and we're not going too far up and, you know, affecting, I don't know what's going to happen down there eventually, but I think it's been a problem.
It's a good point, but the ordinance requires specificity.
Right, that's true, too. So, we can scrutinize that when it comes, because there's quite a length of, you know, roadway here, looks like it to be on both sides of the road, would be the north side and the south side, I guess, so, but we can scrutinize that, I guess, when it gets put into ordinance form.
Very well. Councilor Dombrowski?
Yeah, if the clerk could just send a communication to Officer Ramos and Officer Kennedy, if they could provide us with that specificity, and we can get that to Copelman and Page for the first reading.
They'll need it.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-eight dash twenty, please signify in the usual manner. Anyone opposed? That passes nine to zero. Twenty-nine dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-nine dash twenty, Jill A. Nataola, to accept San Maset Drive and Candlewood Drive as a street in the city of Leominster. We did get communication back from the DPW indicating that they were in favor of this petition. Unfortunately, we're still awaiting recommendations from the planning director, the planning board, and the building inspector, so I would ask for further time and just ask if we could send those departments a reminder.
Very well.
And ask you to poll my committee.
Very good. Councilor Chalfo-Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
The unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give twenty-nine dash twenty further time. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving twenty-nine dash twenty further time, please signify in the usual manner, and that passes nine to zero. We'll move on to Public Service, twenty-five dash twenty.
Public Service, twenty-five dash twenty, National Grid in Verizon, New England Incorporated. Nashua Street, request to install four jointly owned poles on Nashua Street, beginning at a point approximately fifteen feet southwest of the center line, at the intersection of Main Street and Nashua Street, and continuing approximately three-hundred-and-eleven feet in the southeast direction. We had a public hearing tonight, and we heard from the gentleman from representing National Grid, and there were no questions or comments, so my recommendation would be to grant.
Poll the rest of my committee. Yes, Councilor Feckley? And Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Public Service to grant twenty-five dash twenty. Is there any further discussion? Councilor David Cormier?
As usual, Mr. President, I do need to abstain from this petition because it is partially owned by my employer. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll note your abstention. Is there any other further discussion? Seeing none, with all those in favor of granting twenty-five dash twenty, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to Ways and Means and the appointment of legal counsel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Appointment of legal counsel. Leominster City Council appoint Steven Meadows of Merrick O'Connell as the city council's legal counsel for 2020. legal counsel for 2020. Just a little bit of housekeeping. Attorney Meadows's last name only has one D, and Merrick O'Connell, Merrick only has one R.
Thank you for those notes.
Okay. I did contact and had a nice conversation with Attorney Meadows, who has accepted, or will accept, a reappointment. He did write to the city clerk, Ms. Huffman, I am writing to confirm that I have accepted or will accept a reappointment to serve as special counsel to the Lemonster City Council. So my recommendation would be that the city council approve the appointment of Stephen Meadows of Merrick O'Connell as the city's legal counsel for 2020, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Councilor Feckley. Councilor Frida?
What's that?
And Councilor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to approve, confirm, rather, Stephen Meadows as legal counsel to the city council. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Dombrowski?
Just a fun fact, Attorney Meadows's brother is a judge in the Worcester District Court who also played some percussion with Hall &amp; Oates.
I was gonna say, Isaac Hall &amp; Oates, right?
So, we need, we need a little rhythm.
I wonder if our about-to-be new attorney has any musical talent, too.
So, just thought I'd throw that out there.
We might need a song and dance someday.
Or a one-on-one.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of confirming the appointment of Stephen Meadows as counsel to the city council, please, I'm gonna do this in roll call, starting with Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And myself, we'll record it as yay. That passes by a vote of nine to zero. We'll move on to 31-20.
Yes, Mr. President, will we have this read into the record? City clerk, read this into the record, or, because I don't think we have yet. A resolution authorizing a policy regarding electioneering during absentee voting and early voting for the 2020 state and federal elections. Whereas Chapter 54, Section 65 of the General Laws of Massachusetts prohibits electioneering, the display or distribution of material intended to influence the actions of voters at or within 150 feet of the entrance of polling places at an election of federal, state, or local officers. Whereas, an increasing percentage of Lemonster voters are taking advantage of their right and opportunity to vote in person by absentee ballot or during the early voting period established by the legislature, and come to the city offices at 25 West Street in order to obtain absentee ballots or cast early ballots. Whereas, such voters should be given the same right and opportunity to cast or obtain ballots free of electioneering activity as it is enjoyed by voters who cast their vote on the day of the election. Whereas, observance of the 150-foot rule established by Chapter 54, Section 65, at the city offices during in-person absentee voting or the early voting period would not unduly restrict the ability of any person to display or distribute campaign messages to prospective voters approaching the city offices. And now, therefore, the city of Lemonster adopts the following regulation for the period designated for in-person absentee voting in the state's early voting period. No poster, card, handbill, placard, picture, or circular intended to influence the action of the voter, other than those expressly authorized by General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65, shall be posted, exhibited, circulated, or distributed in the city clerk's office in the building where the city clerk's office is located, on the walls thereof, on the premises on which the city offices at 25 West Street stand within 150 feet of the building entrance door to said city offices.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, the last meeting, we did refer this out to the Board of Registrazes and the city solicitor. However, as has been since explained to me by the city clerk, the Board of Registrazes convenes only once a year, so would not be really, you know, timely for us to wait for their referral. But we did receive a referral from Brian Riley of KP Law. He indicates, I am responding to this petition. I understand that the Elections Division of Secretary Galvin's office has recommended adopting such a resolution, given the increased use of absentee voting and early voting. In my opinion, the resolution would be valid and consistent with General Law, Chapter 54, Section 65. My only other comment would be that while the prohibited distance from the polling place cannot be more than 150 feet, the city would have the discretion to use a lower figure, since 150 feet from city hall's doors covers a lot of area. 150 feet is the required minimum on the actual dates of elections. The resolution, as is, would be in proper form, however, in my opinion. So based on that referral and recommendation, Mr. President, I would recommend that we authorize this resolution, and I would ask you to poll my committee.
I'll check with Councilor Frida.
I agree.
And I'll check with Councilor Dombrowski.
I agree.
So the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means is to adopt resolution? Adopt 31, resolution represented by 31-20. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote, starting with Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Chair will be recorded as yay, as well, that passes by a vote of nine to zero. We'll move on to new business. This is a first reading of an ordinance, or it's referred to the chairperson of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reading of an ordinance, petition 59-18. James Whitney and 10 registered voters amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning, provided the applicant obtained a special permit from the Planning Board. The actual ordinance reads, Section 22-17 of the revised ordinances entitled "Underlying District's Table of Uses" is hereby amended in the category of "Business Uses," quote, "Restaurant, fast food, takeout with drive-through," end quote, in the column for Multi-Use District 1, MU1, by deleting N and inserting in its place SPPB. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant, to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Chair will record it as yay. A nine to zero vote, 59-18, is adopted, first reading. First reading of an ordinance, 17-20.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 17-20, first reading of an ordinance, David R. Cormier. Request a stop sign on South Street against southbound drivers at Tisdale Street. And then the ordinance itself would read, Section 13-77 of the revised ordinances entitled "Stop Signs" is hereby amended by inserting the following. "South Street against southbound drivers at Tisdale Street." My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Are there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And chair will record it as yay, by a nine to zero vote. 17-20 passes as first reading. Refer the first reading of the ordinance on 18-20 to Legal Affairs Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. David R. Cormier, request to install a stop sign on South Street against northbound drivers at Crown Street. This ordinance would read, Section 13-77 of the revised ordinances entitled "Stop Signs" is hereby amended by inserting the following. "South Street against northbound drivers at Crown Street." My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of 18-20. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
DA.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And that will be recorded as yay. 18-20 passes unanimously, nine to zero. The first reading of the ordinance, 19-20, is referred to the chairperson of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-77, stop signs and add the following. Comstock Road against southbound drivers at Union Street. Comstock Road against eastbound drivers at Duggan Drive. Duggan Drive against southeastbound drivers at Union Street. Duggan Drive against westbound drivers at Glenwood Drive. This ordinance would read, Section 13-77 of the revised ordinances entitled "Stop Signs" is hereby amended by inserting the following. Comstock Road against southbound drivers at Union Street. Comstock Road against eastbound drivers at Duggan Drive. Duggan Drive against southeastbound drivers at Union Street. Duggan Drive against westbound drivers at Glenwood Drive. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Mr. President, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you.
I agree.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to adopt the first reading of an ordinance, 19-20. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And that will be recorded as yay. First reading of 19-20 passes by unanimous vote. First reading of an ordinance, 20-20, is referred to the chairperson of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. 20-20, Patrick Bresnahan, Lemonster Police Officer. Request no parking signs on North Main, East, and Priest Street. Also, no parking between signs on poles 24 and 25, located in front of 227 Priest Street. This ordinance will read, Chapter 13, Section 13-34 of the revised ordinances entitled "No Parking" on certain streets, is hereby amended by inserting the following phrase. Priest Street, South Side, from 88 feet east of North Main Street and then easterly for a distance of 155 feet. Priest Street, North Side, between poles number 24 and number 25, in front of 227 Priest Street. My recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Councilor David Cormier?
If I may, I just have a question. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, where on North Main Street are these going? Remember, there was some confusion about...
North Main Street, East, and Priest Street. He's not, he's not giving us an exact address.
I still don't understand, you know, where, where on North Main Street?
Well, so there's no, there should be more of an, it should, there should be more specificity.
Right.
With, not necessarily the second part of the ordinance, but the, but the first part. In hindsight, I agree with you. So I don't think there's any rush on this, so I would...
If I may, through the chair, I thought at the last meeting, I raised this, and...
You did raise it.
And we were supposed to, do we get any response? We got no response. So, so, you know, I, I'm not, and I'm not gonna read it all again, but there are several, I mean, North Main Street is, what, three miles long, at least? So there are several places on North Main Street where there's already no parking. Are we overlapping? Maybe there's, maybe there is no parking there, but the signs have went missing over the years, or, I have no idea where on, and certainly the ward counselor, I mean, signs start showing up, I think we wanna be able to understand, you know, what we're voting on, so we don't just put in signs everywhere, and then the ward counselor is getting all kinds of calls from people.
More importantly, this might not be enforceable.
Yeah.
Right, because of state highway through the...
Well, no, because if it's not specific, I don't know how you're gonna ticket somebody for something that, you know, the signs have to comply with the ordinance, and if the ordinance is unclear, then we got a problem.
Well, either that, or you would be talking that legally, the east side of North Main Street, the whole length, I mean...
It seems to be an issue.
You know, so I think that you need some clarity, because I just, I don't understand, I still don't understand what I would be voting on. And this is why I mentioned with the previous ordinance that we need lengths, we need poll numbers, we need some kind of reference, because nothing is referenced there.
Chairman, want to rethink that as a result of this discussion?
Yeah, no, I, I think, I don't think there's any rush on this, and I think there is a need for specificity, so I'm happy to modify my position and request further time, and then if we can ask Officer Bresnahan just for some clarification on exactly where he means, just with regard, obviously, to the first part of the proposed ordinance.
Seems to be an appropriate request. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, you okay with that?
I sure am.
And Councilor Cormier, I assume you are.
Yes, absolutely.
So, the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give the first reading of 20-20 further time? Seeing, any other further, any further discussion on that? Councilor Arndinger?
You know, I may be reading this wrong, but there's no, that I can understand, there is no request for no parking signs on North Main Street. North Main Street is given as a point of reference. From there, 85 feet east on Priest Street is where he wants to put the sign. So there's no real sign on North Main Street that I see.
Oh, so it's just Priest Street?
Right.
Oh, so you read it just Priest Street, from North Main?
From North Main Street, east on Priest Street.
Yeah, well, maybe, and maybe that's through the chair, maybe that's correct. I just, if we can get some clarity on this, because the...
I don't, I don't think it's a time-sensitive matter, so it might be better to be sure.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah.
Councilor Feckley?
Well, I agree with, to the chair, to, to Councilor Cormier, I agree with Councilor Arndinger. The letter that was received by the city clerk on November 18th indicates, I am requesting a no parking sign be installed 88 feet from North Main Street, east on Priest Street, on the south side of Priest Street. So that seems to be pretty clear, although I would not, you know, disagree with, for the time, if we wanted further clarification, but...
Okay.
I think that the information is here, but if we want it clarified, that's fine.
Through the chair, you know, if that's the case, then we need, we need to take out the word "on" North Main Street. It needs to say "from" North Main Street. So, there is a language, there's no question, there's a language problem. Something isn't jiving between what's on, what's being petitioned on our agenda and the language in their, whatever they sent us, so...
All right, so we're going to get it straightened out.
Yeah.
So, the unanimous recommendation, once again, is for further time. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving the first reading of the ordinance of 20-20 further time, please signify in the usual manner. Anyone opposed? Nine to zero, it's given further time. Move on to old business. Is there any old business to come before the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd just like to point out that on the rules that we approved on January 6th as a council, Rule 3, the Public Service Committee shall gather information within city council jurisdiction, making a determination and recommend action to the council on matters pertaining public service, which includes function of the DPW, streets, both accepted and unexpected, as well as the sewer and water systems in the cemetery. I don't know if the president has the right to rule against our rules. I think the counselor from across from me can attest to that. We had, we had a similar situation when he was president. I think we got a ruling.
Give me just a moment.
It's right on the minutes that you just approved tonight.
That's not what I'm looking at. We can refer it to the Public Service Committee as well as the Legal Affairs Committee. Any further discussion on that point?
(inaudible).
It would be referred to each committee jointly, I guess. Is that okay with you, Counsel Frida?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Anything else on the old business? We'll move on to the community calendar. Anything on the community calendar? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, or adjourn.
This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Lemmonster, locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.